Recording in progress.
Good evening, everyone. Before we get started, I'd like to invite Pastor Shane Walker from First Baptist Church to come out for an invitation tonight.
Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, we come before you. We ask, Lord, that your Spirit would please be present this evening, that your Spirit would give illumination and wisdom and unity. You would lead the City Council, Lord, into helping create a community where it is safe and enjoyable and where the weak are taken care of and where, Lord, the strong assist in caring for the weak. We pray, Lord, that you would particularly be with the police force, the EMTs, and the firefighters. Lord, we ask that you would please bless them as they protect us physically and morally. And Lord, we pray that these men and women will be kept safe in their duties. And Lord, that you again will be with us as we think through how to make decisions for the community of Watertown so that it will be a place that everyone enjoys living at. And we ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Walker. The call today is me on May twentieth to order. It is seven oh three. Roll call, please.
Davis.
Lampy.
Berg.
Here.
Barts.
Blanky.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Arnett.
Here.
Wetzel.
Here.
Molenhauer.
Give your police staff a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First thing on the agenda is the minutes of the council meeting. From May sixth, twenty twenty five.
Mayor, I'll move for the approval of the minutes that's submitted.
Okay, motion by Arnett.
Second.
Given by Molenhauer. All's a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. Next, we have comments and suggestions from citizens present. Up to three minutes or so. If you get close to the time, I'll just wave my arms at you a little bit. Anybody wish to comment?
Stephanie Brewer. Good evening. My name is Stephanie Brewer. I am the Executive Director for the Watertown Main Street Program. I started the same week that you all started your new session. The Main Street Program was established for historical preservation, beautification, and economic vitality for our downtown district. Now, before I was an executive director, I was a classroom teacher for twenty-five years. One of my goals each year as a teacher was to establish appropriate relationships with my students so that I could make the best decisions for them as I taught my subject matter. What I found is that students loved when I took an interest in what they were interested in, when I helped them reach their own personal goals as well as their academic ones. If I could make this plea to you, our businesses have just come through a difficult season in the downtown district. The bridge project took a long time. No complaining here coming about that, but it just did. And businesses have struggled because of it. So I would like to encourage you to go and see those business owners. If you have a lunch meeting or you're eating out one night with your family, eat downtown. If you have a coffee meeting, please visit one of our lovely coffee shops. I can recommend a drink if you need one. If you have a sweet tooth, please stop in one of the yummy bakeries that we have in the downtown district. And if you have a gift for a loved one, please visit one of our retail shops in the beautiful downtown. While there, please introduce yourself. They want to meet you. They want to be able to talk to you. They want to share their goals and their dreams with you about what they would like to see in the downtown district. I think that if you do this, you will find yourself making better informed decisions concerning the future of our great city. Please don't listen to the keyboard warriors. Instead, talk to those that are doing the work, the work to see Watertown succeed. I do appreciate that Mayor Starks has been at the last two events that we've held downtown. He was able, because of someone having to drop out, attend our whiskey and wine walk. And he did walk around and introduce himself to people and talk with those around him. He purposely went by himself so that he could do so. He was also at our Bridge Pass this past Saturday and again was walking around alone so that he could introduce himself and talk to individuals as needed. So I do appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor Starks. Thank you for your time tonight. This is all I wanted to do, was just introduce myself and encourage you to visit our downtown district and enjoy the wonderful businesses that are down there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to comment? Just checking online. Okay. I'll close that. And there's more time at the end if you wish to comment then as well. Next, we'll move on to reports. I'll put them all together. Licensing Board minutes from April ninth, Senior Senator Advisory Board minutes from April fifteenth, Parks Recreation and Forestry minutes from April twenty first, Finance Committee minutes from April twenty first, Site Planner Review minutes from April twenty eighth, Plan Commission minutes from April twenty eighth, Finance Committee minutes from May sixth, Public Safety and Welfare minutes from May seventh, Tourism minutes from May eighth, and Plan Commission minutes from May twelfth. Mr. Blanky.
Thank you, Mayor Starks. Just one question on the Park, Rec, and Forestry, page twelve, item five B. It says that the YMC asks for a fee waiver. And it says that the total waiver would be for twenty-four hundred, but then that the decision was made to grant a partial waiver. But the financial implication isn't noted. I was just wondering if perhaps Alder Lampy, you know, the implication, or if we could just get that sent to us.
Yeah, I serve on Park and Rec, which is why I mentioned here. I don't have the exact financial ramification of that, but I think that's a reasonable request because it was a partial decision as noted in the minutes.
I like the approach that the board took there. I just was curious as to where we split the baby on that.
Yep. I might be able to get that for you before the end of the meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Berg.
Mayor Starks, actually, on that same topic of our Park and Rec Commission minutes, I looked at, I was on, again, the Public Works Commission for several years, and we dealt with this issue of Hayden Pond and Lake Victoria and the issues of algae and the fact that it doesn't always have a real pleasant look to it on those two lakes, especially Hayden Pond. But the bottom of that, page fourteen, or actually within that page, it talks about the fact that all questions as to who maintains this body of water are very clearly stated that it is not the responsibility of the City of Watertown to maintain. But when you look at the water in those two ponds, a lot of it comes from stormwater runoff. And stormwater runoff is obviously a city type of infrastructure that's contributing to the problem they're dealing with. So I would ask that they, because I've had discussions with property owners on Lake Victoria, and they spend a lot of money as property owners to give it that nice lake look without algae. But Hayden Pond doesn't have that same benefit. But I'm just finding fault a little bit with their wording on the fact that this has no responsibility for the city and it's all on the property owner as to the issues of maintenance. So I would maybe ask that they look at that topic a little bit more broadly and ask again where the source of that water is coming from and why they don't have some areas of responsibility.
Alden Lampy.
Mayor, again, serving on Park and Rec, I apologize that the minutes are a month behind. At the last Park and Rec meeting that we had last night, we actually did have some additional information. So this is probably where our Public Works folks probably may want to chime in. Public Works did take a look at some of the runoff issues and essentially decided that they were a minority of the issues there. This is an issue that's going to keep percolating around the city. The current recommendation that I heard from Park and Rec Director was that the city was going to draft essentially a weed maintenance policy and potentially look at a twenty twenty-six budget recommendation. On top of that, I encourage that the property owners consider basically, you know, looking at a park district so they can basically incorporate tax themselves and then use those funds through a park district to maintain the area. And then the city would have the option to join or not join that, basically, a park district. So there's other things we can do in that area. It's been through Park and Rec now three times. It's been through Public Works at least twice. I do hope that there is some resolution here, but I think that it's not going to come to a healthy resolution as long as we're dealing with individual property owners, some of which who want to participate with the city and a few who don't. We're probably going to have to resolve this one way or another by basically letting them all go or encouraging them to incorporate in some sort of an entity we can work together with.
Mr. Mayor. So just first direct Alder Berg to look at the meeting materials for the lack Public Work Commission meeting because in that you will find significant background documentation on this issue, going back to the last several times as referred to by Alder Lampy that this has been before both Parks and Rec and Public Works and had decisions made on it previously to not do that. But it also gives the clarification as to the ownership issue you're describing, as to why the, and just to state for very clear, this is, as a body of water in the state of Wisconsin, according to our constitution, it is owned by the state. It is not owned by the city. It is not owned by those property owners. It is owned by the state. And that's, I think, the genesis of that comment in the Parks and Rec meeting minutes indicating where the responsibility does not lie with the city because the city does not own it in addition to prior determinations as to the overall main sources of the pollutants. With that in mind, I will echo Alder Lampy's comments of what came out of Public Works was to support the work of staff in drafting a policy regarding weed maintenance. So not the water quality issues. It's a state-owned body of water. But weed maintenance in and around these bodies of water, of which there are many in the city. So this decision cannot be made in isolation, but needs to be made in the context of the many such bodies of water that exist in and around the city. Hence, the need for a policy solution rather than a one-off action.
Thank you, Alder Lampy. Any more discussion on the reports? All right, next move on Communication Recommendations. The Baird presentation. Come on up, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Brad Vigut with Baird. I'm here to make a presentation regarding a financing resolution that's on your agenda a little later in the agenda. I'll walk through the presentation packet and answer any questions. Just by way of summary, this is a general obligation promissory note with an estimated issue size of eighteen million, five hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. There's two purposes for this note. First, it's to provide long-term financing of the fire station project, which was financed with a short-term borrowing last spring, spring of twenty-four. And second is to fund the city's capital improvement program at four million, two hundred fifty thousand dollars. So this note is set up with a nineteen-year amortization period, so the final payment would be twenty forty-four. First interest would be June of next year, June of twenty twenty-six. Now, the estimated interest rate on this note is four point five six percent. The resolution you're considering tonight would establish a narrow set of parameters that, once those parameters are met, the terms and the rate on the note can be finalized outside of a scheduled council meeting. So in terms of the timeline, Finance Committee looked at this back on May twelfth. With your authorization tonight, Baird and city staff will take steps to bring this note to the marketplace. We'll get, we plan to finalize the terms of the note on June fifth, and then July first, the note would close. So on July first, the four million, two hundred and fifty thousand is available to the city to fund its capital program. And on July seventh, the short-term financing, the interim financing for the fire station project will be retired, will be paid off. I included detailed repayment schedules. I split apart the repayment schedule for the fire station financing. It's fourteen million, three thirty-five. And I broke that out from the four million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar capital financing for the city. That capital financing is your routine capital projects that the city undertakes annually, and that's repaid over an eight-year period. Only the fire station financing is extended the full nineteen years. I looked back to last March when we updated the presentation, the projection really for the long-term interest rate for the fire station loan. At that time, we were using four point eight one percent. Today's estimate is four point six five. So we're coming in better than projections in terms of dollars that equates to about one hundred ninety thousand dollars in lower debt service payments for that fire station project. I included several placeholder issues in the analysis. None of those are being acted on tonight. They're here for planning purposes only. But essentially, we get to a position where the city has a manageable debt service budget. You've got a budget that, if all of these financings were enacted, that steps up incrementally over time before leveling off. And that's inclusive of your capital program plus potential facilities program. So with that, I'd be glad to go into more detail or answer any questions.
Alden Lampy.
I just wanted to say thank you for rounding up the numbers on the interest rates. I know that was a topic of concern that we had at Finance, and it's always good to hear that, you know, through good planning, we were able to actually take advantage and save almost two hundred thousand dollars.
Mr. Blanky.
Are we able, as a city, if we see more favorable interest rates in the coming years, to refinance these? Or is there, sometimes there's a pretty steep penalty to refinance this type of bond?
Yeah, there's no.
Something that's viable?
Yes, you do have the option to refinance these bonds, and that option begins in twenty thirty-five. So there's a ten-year period where you would not have the option to prepay, but after that ten years, you'd have the option. And I would also, as an aside, say that there is a lot of other city debt that has options to prepay. So it's not that all of your debt is locked out for the next ten years. It's just this one in particular.
Thank you.
And again, the fire station, the number of years on that retirement?
Nineteen years. Twenty forty-four would be the final payment.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor. Yeah.
Do you have any concerns with the recent volatility in the TBO market in terms of implications for the borrowing rate?
No, I don't. We saw significant volatility after the tariff and the trade wars started. We saw that carry through the municipal market as well as the treasury market. That seems to have settled out largely. In the last two weeks, we've seen very high volume of, especially Wisconsin, issued municipal debt. But in a broader market nationwide, I don't have concerns of meeting these interest rates that I'm using for projections. But in a broader market nationwide, I don't have concerns of meeting these interest rates that I'm using for projections. In fact, I I'd expect we'd be below what I'm using for projections tonight.
Uh in particular, I was referring to the Moody's downgrade that's already had a pretty immediate impact.
Yeah, the Moody's downgrade was largely priced into the rates that T bills and notes were were locking in. Um S and P had downgraded the government uh probably five years ago or so.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, so it wasn't really a big surprise to the market.
And then just to, Mr. Mayor, an informational request. I found it helpful to actually see the presentation, but in order to get that, I had to go back to the last Finance Committee meeting materials. And just in the future, if we could have that presented amongst the council meeting materials for convenience, I I would appreciate it.
Presentation ahead of time?
Yes.
Okay.
Because you really get a much better explanation of what's going on by looking through that presentation than looking through the mini pages of the resolution and yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, next we have an employee recognition. Amber Humpschel, that's unable to be here tonight, has served our community for the last twenty years, Police Department. I'd hope to really thank her for all of her time. Of course, she cannot be here tonight. Next, twenty twenty-four Watertown Fire Department Annual Report. Watertown Fire Department Monthly Report for March.
Those were both just submitted for informational purposes only. If you have any questions, let me know. Yes?
Mayor, um I I always like the uh how the report's laid out and there's there's, I think, some a few things that I'd like to highlight and and ask some questions on. One of the, one of the things that I noted here is the increase in personnel. I think we've had a budget allocation for those personnel for some time. And I've, if if I'm reading this right, we're finally catching up in terms of the the hiring and and filling of those positions.
Finally, yes. So we have gone through a lot of turnover in the last five years. And um my main goal last year was to get us staffed um in June. So in three weeks, we'll have our last position filled. So hopefully, we'll be fully staffed.
Congratulations on that.
Thank you.
Uh the one thing I wanted to look ahead is a contrast, I think, be- uh and this, I'm going to refer to some page numbers in your packet here. So page thirty-eight is the annual report that talks about the simultaneous calls in in twenty twenty-four, uh which were twenty twenty, twenty-two percent of total volume and an increase of four percent between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. If you look ahead a little bit to the monthly report, I think you know where I'm going with this one. On page forty-eight of the packet, you'll see in twenty twenty-five that already on simultaneous calls, there are reached twenty-eight, twenty-eight and thirty-two, which anybody can tell you is going to average out already, almost thirty percent of simultaneous calls. We are, we're busy.
We are very busy, yeah. So um while the call, total call volume is slowly incrementing or increasing, um the amount of times that we have a one call come in, we start responding and we're called out to another call like at within a minute. Our dispatchers can attest to this. Or uh we may be on a call and before we're back and in service, we're called out to another one. What that means for the citizens of Watertown, we currently only staff with one paramedic-level ambulance with two people and then an engine with four people. So when we go on a second-out call, if it's for an EMS call or other, we're taking people off of the fire engine to staff a second ambulance usually, because it's usually EMS calls. Um and so we can only do that so many times before we run out of people. So we've been calling for mutually a little bit more just because of that situation. Um the other day, we had nineteen calls and I am seeing like thirty percent as kind of what's happening. And I don't know if it's a fluke or if it's a a true trend yet, but we'll see that.
Thank you. Just as a, please, go ahead.
Mayor Sucks, so I have a question also in the mutual calls received and given. As you looked through the list of cities, um it's fairly equivalent, um the received and given, um where sometimes they come and help us, sometimes we go and help them. There is one that stands out, though, and that's Beaver Dam, which we, according to this information, we've received zero events from them or help from them and ten given. Yep, so does that have to do with their capacity or can you give some insight there?
Beaver Dam has a lot of fires and we are on their box card or so when they have a fire, a residential or commercial or other, they call us for an ALS ambulance because we're the closest next paramedic-level service for Beaver Dam. We don't necessarily call them down here for our ALS ambulance change of quarters. We'll call Western Lakes to come in because um the Economac Station is closer. So when we have a fire, um Western Lakes comes and backstaffs an ambulance for us. Um and the engine comes from a variety of places. When Beaver Dam has a fire, um they will have us go up as an ALS ambulance. So and I think sometimes we send a chief depending on the situation. Um so when they're having a structural fire, we're sending an ambulance up there.
Does that have to do with geographical and what's available to them as far as?
Uh the Mavis Divisions all, every year, we sit down and look at the cards and we discuss as county chiefs, what is the most appropriate thing and what can we actually give and afford to give? Um so rather than Beaver Dam calling for the the ladder truck and our ambulance and a chief, maybe we send just an ambulance. And so we've, we've evened it out. Um and every year, there's minor tweaks based on staffing, how are things going for the department? Did a um, did departments come together like climb in Little Resville and those types of things?
That's helpful, thank you.
Yep.
If I may.
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Arnett.
As a follow-up to Alder Lampy's comment on the simultaneous calls, and you had already made a comment there, it said usually it's it's ambulance, it's EMS.
Yep.
But I I would appreciate if it is convenient to do so, an analysis of last year to understand of those simultaneous calls, how many of them were both EMS or EMS versus fire. If you just want to tell me, you know, pretty much categorically, it's it's EMS and EMS, then I'll I'll take it, but.
Okay, um with last year's reporting system, I don't know if I'd be able to break it down because we did have a transition last year from one records management system that didn't give me those detailed information um to a new one for fireworks. And so I might be able to provide that here on out or for next year. Um I'll look at that and see if we can do it. But when I say usually, it's because seventy-two percent of our calls are EMS. Um so at least one of them is going to be an EMS call, whether it's a fire that was impacted or not is another thing. Um I believe in, I think it was in the monthly report cover page of this one, we did have a a day that I was just explaining and it was four EMS call or four calls simultaneously, where the first two or three were EMS calls. There was like a fire engine call for a wires downer, some sort of situation, I don't recall off the top of my head. And then the the fourth call was for a pulseless non-breathing patient. So um I'll try to bring highlights of that and explain that a little bit better and we can dive into it.
Reporting system, maybe you could do that for the first quarter of this year instead.
Yep, yeah, I'll see what we can find.
Thank you.
Mr. Berg.
Yeah, Chief, with uh the fact that we've we've switched over to our new uh location.
Yes.
Have we? Yeah, and I'm I'm interested in the the ability to transition from where we were to where we are and the response time that you need to have in order to be where you got to be on time or within a timeframe. How do you, how do you take on that type of a task uh with an unknown uh location that you're you're just getting used to now? With all the issues that were of concern at the time, it was being looked at at a site. Uh I I know we've got some uh action tonight we're going to take that's going to help you with um
Yep.
with getting through intersections in a timely way, right?
Yes, absolutely.
But um tell us a little bit how you prepare for and how you're actually doing it at new site with responding in in a timely fashion.
As far as getting you the data, what we can do is we can do like a six-month comparison. I can look back to the last six months and do the ninetieth percentile of response time um when we were at one oh six Jones. And then in six months, I can say this is what our response time ninety percent of the time has been from the new location. So we can do that look back. Um there are a couple of things that will impact that for like apples to apples. And that would be if the the OptiCom system uh gets installed in the middle of that, that may speed things up. But know that that is something that we are tracking. It's on my my computer dashboard. Every morning I log in, I can see where we're tracking for the response times. Um and then we do have the heat maps that show like the response times. So right now, you can kind of see like where it's taking us six or seven minutes to get to those areas. And we'll be able to see that transition and then I can do a comparison in the future of, you know, just capturing this time versus this time. So we'll be able to provide that to you and we are watching it.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, next under new business. Reunited Action Committee Appointments. When we had committee appointments for the nine of you, it was suggested that we do a roll call. So plan on doing that for any type of uh committee appointments in the future too, unless there's change.
Yes.
For that. Any questions on the assignments?
The appointments?
The appointments, sorry, yes.
You want a motion?
Sure, yeah, motion first, thank, thank you, Mr. Smith.
I would make a motion to approve each of the mayor's appointments set forth uh on this document.
Okay, second, motion by Smith, second by Berg. Okay, now any question or discussion? Alderman Lampy.
Mayor, I just wanted to say this, this is, this is a very impressive lineup of of folks that we have. I thi- I think I know every single person who's stepping onto a committee and in some cases, in the case of Kerry, um stepping onto their third or fourth, whether. So I also want to thank especially Kerry for essentially averting a crisis, if you will, on the Park and Rec side. We were considering breaking the requirement that the Park and Rec Chair serve on Plan Commission into two parts. But that need has been alleviated um by by Kerry stepping up and taking both of those positions, so thank you.
He want to be here too tonight, so. There's a little bit of experience with some of the people on those assignments, so. Okay, do a roll call him, please.
Smith.
Aye.
Arnett.
Yes.
Wetzel. Moldenhauer.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Lampy. Berg.
Aye.
Bartz.
Aye.
Blankie.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Okay, next, convening a closed session for one nine point eight-five to confer with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. We have InterTech PSI Johnsonville Sausage Project.
Motion. Go into closed session.
Motion by Davis, second by Bartz. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Davis. Lampy. Berg.
Aye.
Bartz.
Aye.
Blankie.
Aye.
Smith. Arnett.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Moldenhauer. Motion passed.
Okay, thank you. Anyone sleeping, if you want to come back, you feel free to do that when we're done.
Lampy.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Bartz. Blankie.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Arnett.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Moldenhauer.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, thank you. Uh next miscellaneous business. Payroll summary of April sixteenth through twenty-ninth and April thirtieth through May thirteenth of twenty twenty-five, cash investments on April thir- of April thirtieth and paid invoices report of April twenty twenty-five. Alderman Berg.
Yeah, um this uh this question is actually more for um Mark Stevens. But tell me again, when I, when I look at our City of Watertown for um interest yield on on investments, it's got a a very big number of eight hundred and twenty, twenty-eight thousand dollars. Mark?
Yes.
And what what period of time is that uh is that revenue generated from?
January one through April.
Wow, it it seems, what, how does that uh number compare with your projection of what we were expecting to get on uh interest yield off of that?
The interest that you see there is all-inclusive of all funds.
Yeah.
So admittedly, I don't have a number to compare that to. And all, I mean, the one that I'm most interested in is general fund. Um and keep an eye on that one, but um yeah, I have um worked diligently to get our money in places where it's making money for us on our behalf all the time.
Yeah, but the benefit is that we still have liquidity. We can still have access to it, even though we get the benefit of of that uh money invested?
Yes. Mm-hmm. Yep, we have uh liquid in cash, but I also have that in a interest-bearing account every evening. And then we have LGIP, which is short-term savings, but it's very liquid. And then we have long-term investments uh that are not as liquid, but uh we've got plenty in the first two categories to pull off of if we need to. But all of our money is making interest overnight, every night, with the exception of fifty thousand dollars that I keep in our checkbook balance.
And I I'm real familiar with the local government investment pool, but the other one that we have for investment, tell me a little bit more about that one.
We had five different funds and now we're down to four. One of, the the one that I just closed a a couple of months ago is for TID four. I moved that from that account into the LGIP so that it was fully liquid this year as we pull it out. Uh but the other four, uh we've got one for water, one for wastewater, uh one for um general. And why am I forgetting the last one? Is TID five.
Anybody else? On a licensing? Okay, licensing amendment to council. We have a B application for a class B molten electric license from Wolf Cram Incorporated DBA. Wolf Cram, Jerry Heller agent, located at three one East Main Street for licensing near July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Move for approval. Motion by Blankie.
Sorry, may I, I move for approval with the condition that they pass their fire inspection.
Okay, good. And second by Bartz, okay, any discussion? Okay, all the papers say aye?
Aye.
Posed? Okay, next one, application for temporary class B beer licenses from Watertown Main Street Program for the craft beer and seltzer walk event on Thursday, July seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, from five to eight P M. Location included two O H two salon, so, two O two West Main Street, Eva's A Push Boutique, two O nine East Main Street, Rayo Jewelers, two seventeen East Main Street, Pine Hill Farm, Wallace Collective, two hundred West Main Street, Sassy Sweets Bakery, one sixteen West Main Street, White Oak Builders, fourteen East Main Street, and Wisconsin Twenty-Sixth Colony Boutique, two eighty North Fourth Street.
I would so move.
Motion by Lampy, second by Bartz, any discussion? Okay, all the favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Next, application for a temporary class B license for a Benteen Family Town Square Summer Concert Series Event on May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, sponsored by the Watertown Main Street Program during the hours of five to ten P M for location one West Main Street.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Bartz. Second by Smith, any discussion? All's in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next, application for temporary class B license for the Moose Lodge Car Show Event on June twelfth, twenty twenty-five, sponsored by Moose Lodge during the hours of five to ten P M for location twelve twenty-two Juno Street.
So move.
Motion by Molenhauer.
Second.
Second by Blanky, any discussion? All's in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next, ordinances, ordinance twenty-five dash zero eight, amend chapter five fifty official zoning map of the City of Watertown to change one hundred East Division Street, pin number two nine one dash zero eight one five dash zero four one two dash zero two nine and one oh four East Division Street, pin two nine one dash zero nine one five dash three three four three dash zero five three from general business zoning to central business zoning, sponsored by myself and the Plan Commission on second reading.
Mayor, move for twenty-five oh eight.
Motion by Arnett. Second, second by Blanky, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Arnett.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Molenhauer.
Aye.
Davis. Lampy.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Bartz.
Aye.
Blanky.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Cue, next, ordinance twenty-five dash zero nine, amend chapter five fifty zoning code through the amendments of language to sections five five zero dash one five, five five zero dash three four B and five five zero dash four nine G, sponsored by myself and the Plan Commission on second reading as well. Motion by Wetzel, second by Davis, any discussion? Okay.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Molenhauer.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Lampy.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Bartz.
Aye.
Blanky.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Arnett.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, next, ordinance twenty-five dash ten, amend chapter five fifty official zoning map to reflect the rezoning of eight forty-eight Milford Street of Edgefield subdivision from single-family residential to two-family residential, sponsored by myself and the Plan Commission on its first reading. Mr. Mayor. Motion by Wetzel.
Second.
Second by Blanky. Any discussion?
Wetzel.
Aye.
Molenhauer.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Lampy.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Bartz.
Aye.
Blanky.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Arnett.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next, ordinance twenty-five dash eleven, amend section five hundred dash three B, stop intersections of the City of Watertown in general ordinances, sponsored by Alderman Davis from the Public Safety and Welfare on its first reading. Miss Davis?
I'll move for ordinance twenty-five dash eleven.
Second by Wetzel, any discussion? Okay.
Davis.
Aye.
Lampy.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Bartz.
Aye.
Blanky.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Arnett.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Molenhauer.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Next, ordinance twenty-five dash one two, repeal a portion of section two four seven dash five prohibited ax boating prohibition area, sponsored by Alderman Davis from the Public Safety and Welfare Committee on its first reading as well. Miss Davis?
It's twenty-five dash twelve.
Motion by Davis. Second by Blanky. Any discussion? Mr. Lampy?
Just in case it wasn't obvious from the preambles of the, of the ordinance, this is basically to repeal the prohibition against trying to boat underneath the main street construction.
I do have one question.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Blanky.
Would it be appropriate to suspend the rules and have both readings for this ordinance on one meeting? Because when we put it into effect, we suspended the rules and had both readings for this ordinance at one meeting. The construction's effectively done, there's no reason to postpone this. It was more of a question for the city attorney, if that's appropriate, but.
It would be something that the council would be able to do, um, I don't know if there's an urgent need to do so, but I could understand why the council would want to do that, and so if the council decides it wants to do so, we usually try to provide additional notice that there'll be both readings at one agenda if we expect that it's going to happen, but you guys do have the authority to amend the rules and to do both readings at once.
There's a chance that the public might not be.
We try to notice it when we have a reasonable expectation that it's going to happen or that there's a strong need that we advise the council that it needs to occur, it just didn't come up for this one that we provided that additional notice to the public. If somebody wanted to object to it in the future, then they could, and that could cause some complications with it, but given the basis of this ordinance, I don't suspect that that's going to be an issue.
Your call, Mr. Blanky.
We have to vote on the first.
Well, I meant, if you wanted to vote on it, sure, if you want to vote on it. Okay, we have a motion to make both readings, we have a second by Wetzel.
We have to vote on the first reading and then have a motion to suspend the rules.
Okay, let's vote on a motion, some new for me, okay, we have a second to make a motion to changes today, the.
Current pending motion is to vote on the ordinance on its first reading. We'll need to resolve that motion first and then before moving on to the next agenda item, an older person would have to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Okay.
And to have a second reading today, and then we would have a vote on that motion. If it is successful, a new holder or another, the same holder would have to then make a motion for approving the ordinance on a thinking reading.
Okay, so now we're doing this three times then, okay. Motion on the ordinance here by Blanky and second by Wetzel, I believe, okay, any discussion on this first one?
We're still on the original motion?
Uh-huh.
I think it was me.
Yeah.
Motion was by Davis.
I'm sorry, you just, sorry, motion by Davis, second by Wetzel, okay. Discussion just to approve the first reading. Okay, we'll take a roll then.
Davis.
Aye.
Lampy.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Bartz.
Aye.
Blanky.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Arnett. Wetzel.
Aye.
Molenhauer. Motion passed.
Okay, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Mr. Blanky.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and proceed with a second reading on ordinance twenty-five dash one two.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Second by Molenhauer, any discussion? Mr. Berg.
Yeah, I, I actually don't have, um, you know, problem per se, but why don't you again restate the urgency? Because I, I've been on this council a long time over the years, and there was a older person, Mark Keel, who would notoriously never, and I may never allow, have two readings at the same meeting because he felt, uh, again, that the urgency had to be paramount and it had to be justified in a way that made the case for it. Anything other than a, an urgency that was, you know, paramount and obvious, the rule of thumb back in all my years was to, to not do two readings the same night, but restate again the urgency.
So, when we passed this ordinance to prohibit the boating under the bridge, we did suspend the rules in that meeting and have both readings in one evening. I believe that due to the significant delays from the bridge and the fact that there is no longer any danger, that having both readings in one night would be appropriate, and delaying it another two weeks for a second reading is simply a procedural hoop that I don't feel is necessary for this particular ordinance.
Mr. Lampy?
Mayor, uh, I'll just add on to the, the urgency pile, uh, we currently have city staff, uh, city committees, maybe yourself, advocating for the use of the river and the town square and its facilities right in the area where this currently applies. So we are currently in, sending out conflicting messages to the public where we have this ordinance in effect that says it's illegal, and at the same time, we're trying to get people to use that very same area with our city messaging.
Mr. Berg.
What will be the, the consequence of a violation then will be a, obviously a ticket of some type, so what, what would that end up entailing? Or a violation?
For taking a boat under the bridge?
If somebody was to violate the boating, they could be issued a citation and it would be prosecuted based upon it being in violation of the current existing ordinance. Uh, I would note that the rule eleven, uh, which is the one that requires the second reading, does provide that in special or emergency situations, the common council can suspend this rule, uh, to have both readings occur in the same common council meeting. So I don't think that they're necessarily relying on this being an emergency situation or that all are, Blanky's suggesting that this is an emergency situation requiring that, but that is a special situation in that the bridge closing down the waterway for boating for that purpose was purely for the special occasion of reconstructing the bridge, that process is over and trying to renew that access to the public is what I think he thinks is a special justification for having the second reading.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, so we'll just take a vote on the possibility of having a second reading going, right? Okay, take a roll call then.
Blanky.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Arnett.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Molenhauer.
Aye.
Davis. Lampy.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Bartz.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, so next we'll, uh, I'll read out. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Blanky.
I'd like to move for ordinance twenty-five dash twelve on its second reading.
Okay, on its second reading, we have a motion by Blanky.
Second.
Second by Molenhauer, okay, any more discussion on this one? Okay, take a roll call again.
Blanky.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Arnett.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Molenhauer. Davis.
Aye.
Lampy.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Bartz.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Twenty-five years of teaching, always learn something new, okay. Under resolutions, I believe, right? Exhibit nine seven four six, resolution to accept bid for publication of council proceedings and city advertising, designate official city newspaper, sponsor myself and the finance committee.
Move an option for exhibit ninety-seven forty-six.
Motion by Berg, second by Bartz, any discussion on that? Okay, all the favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next, exhibit nine seven four seven, resolution to approve the final plat for Edgefield subdivision, sponsored by myself and the Plan Commission. Move for ninety-seven forty-seven. Motion by Blanky, second by Bartz, any discussion on that? Mr. Lampy.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, I do want to look back in the packet on page one thirty-three, that's where we, uh, have the rezoning reference there, which talks about the specific location of some of the twin homes in this particular development. I, I wanted to highlight that because I do want to acknowledge the feedback, uh, from the public that, uh, they were looking for basically plat that included entirely single-family homes. Uh, the one, uh, the concession that I do want to note, uh, here is that it does not appear that any of the twin homes are up against any of the existing developments or the existing subdivision. So it's with that accommodation and, um, for the neighborhood that, that I am moving forward in support of, of this.
Okay, anybody else? Take a roll call, please.
Blanky.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Arnett.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Molenhauer.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Lampy.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Bartz.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, next, exhibit nine seven four eight, resolution authorizing issuance and establishing parameters of the sale not to exceed nineteen million, general obligation promissory note sponsored by myself and the finance committee. Mr. Lampy?
Exhibit ninety-seven forty-eight.
Motion by Lampy, second by Davis, any discussion on that? Okay.
Lampy.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Bartz.
Aye.
Blanky.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Arnett.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Molenhauer.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Motion carried.
And next, exhibit nine seven four nine, resolution to approve the purchase of Opticom, sponsored by myself and the finance committee.
I'll move for adoption.
Motion by Berg. Second by Smith. Okay, any discussion? Mr. Berg.
Uh, just to point out that, that this software is going to be, uh, in some ways a miracle worker by providing, uh, coordination for, um, our fire vehicles to be able to navigate in, in high traffic areas in a, in a way that's going to be, um, very interesting and, and something I want to watch play out. I, I obviously hope for the best, I want it to, to work for all the right reasons, but it, it's, it's very impressive, uh, software, and I'm, I'm just thankful that we have it as an option to help expedite, uh, the transport.
Anyone else? Okay.
Berg.
Aye.
Bartz.
Aye.
Blanky.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Arnett.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Molenhauer.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Lampy.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next, exhibit nine seven five zero, resolution to approve the final plat for the enclave subdivision, sponsored by, by myself and the Plan Commission.
Move for ninety-five, ninety-seven fifty.
Motion by Blanky. Second by Bartz. Any discussion? All's in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next, exhibit nine seven five.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Uh, point of order? I believe that that should have a roll call vote, should it not? For a final plat.
You are, I, uh, sorry, I was looking at my, I forgot my notes here, my apologies.
Blanky.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Arnett.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Molenhauer.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Lampy.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Bartz. Motion carried.
Okay, next one does not, sorry, exhibit nine seven five one, resolution to execute the waiver of conflict of interest from Act Lee Brinelson LLP, sponsored by myself.
Some moves.
Motion by Arnett. Second by Molenhauer, okay. Voice vote, okay. Yeah, that's, I had a mix up on mine, sorry, okay, all's in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next, G, exhibit nine seven five two, resolution to approve purchase of wastewater ultraviolet disinfection equipment, sponsored by Alderman Arnett from Public Works Commission.
Some moves.
Motion by Arnett, second by Wetzel. Any discussion?
Arnett.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Berg, I'm sorry.
You got, uh, there was actually three, it looks like there was a, just the one ahead the bid, so, but, uh, two of them didn't respond back. Is that right?
Yes.
I mean, for such, for such a large amount of expenditure, I'm, it's, uh, it always makes you feel better to have, uh, something to compare it with, but, uh, you, you don't feel any, uh, reluctance, uh, determine, Arnett?
When we've gone out to bid and it didn't come in and it comes in below what we were expecting to be anyway, then we're good with it. Okay, anyone else? Okay.
Arnett.
Aye.
Wetzel. Molenhauer.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Lampy.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Bartz. Blanky.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Exhibit nine-seven-five-three, resolution for wastewater utility twenty-twenty-four, compliance maintenance annual report, sponsored by Alderman Arnett from Public Works Commission.
The move.
Motion by Arnett, second by Mullenhauer. Any discussion?
Maybe just to ask our chairman of it, any highlights in that annual report, Chairman Arnett, that you may want to bring to our attention? I know we've got it in some summer here, but do you see anything in that report that you feel is noteworthy for our attention?
Only to call attention to it is that you don't put attention to it, which is there's a recommendation from the state on this one, which has been a recurring recommendation that made and...
We'll continue to make progress on that, but it's not as pressing as it may seem when you look at it.
Anybody else? Just do a voice call on this one. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, last one. Exhibit nine-seven-five-four, resolution to amend agreement with Watertown Riverfest Incorporated, sponsored by myself and the finance committee.
Make an option ninety-seven fifty-four.
Okay, motion by Berg, second by Lampy.
No, I am going to recuse myself from this.
Oh, sorry.
Because I serve on the board of Riverfest.
Okay, thank you for noting. Motion by Berg. Second by Smith. Okay. Any discussion on that?
Only again to comment that our finance committee did a nice, kind of a healthy discussion. We went back and forth on different options here, but in the end, we agreed on an approach here that shows our willingness to contribute toward this program. But at some point, after sixty thousand, it becomes the Riverfest committee's job to oversee and to take care of those expenditures and to keep it in line where they can, and we're all confident they can. But we have a very good thing going. I'm pleased with what we accomplished as a finance committee, and I'm excited about the continuation of a very beneficial fundraiser in an event for Watertown that does nothing but make me proud.
Ms. Mullenhauer?
Oh, excuse me. I'd like to see, now, we're going to divide the costs, I believe, at, you were talking thirty thousand dollars apiece for expenditures, sixty thousand, and then the city could contribute thirty, and Riverfest could contribute thirty thousand dollars toward it.
Right.
It was at twenty-five, right? Or we're going to go twenty-five thousand apiece? Anyway, the thing is, I don't know if we should go up to thirty thousand apiece. It seems a little bit steep. We're going to go twenty-five thousand apiece, that'd be fifty thousand. And the thing is, I guess we should think about that just a little bit. I know Riverfest is a good thing, but thirty thousand apiece, and the question comes up, I think there was some money that hadn't been paid from last year yet from Riverfest, if I'm not mistaken, in our last meeting at the Safety and Welfare Committee meeting. And we got to look at that. Thirty thousand dollars apiece, and if it goes beyond thirty thousand apiece, are we going to stop it at thirty thousand dollars apiece? Or is the city going to go higher than if the costs go beyond that?
Ms. Davis?
I think the agreement says two things that's before us, the resolution. First, it adjusts twenty-twenty-four the amount owed by Riverfest twenty-twenty-four to twenty-five thousand dollars. That's the first thing it does. The second thing it does is establishes a cost share up to sixty thousand dollars, so an equal cost share up to sixty thousand. After sixty thousand dollars, Riverfest is accountable for every dollar after sixty thousand dollars. That doesn't mean it's going to be thirty thousand dollars. It just allows that amount to be in the agreement. So, for this year, as an example, it's, they did the extraordinary fees. Remember, we saw that in public safety, and it's not intended to be sixty thousand dollars this year.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
As Alderman Berg mentioned, we had an extensive discussion at the finance committee. And one of the things that I pointed out at the committee meeting was not only the extraordinary effort that everybody recognizes is part of the Riverfest legacy in our city, based on tremendous volunteerism and really the very best of Watertown. But we have had a very changing financial arrangement from the very beginning under Riverfest. And while it seems like forever ago, in the early years of Riverfest, the city funded a hundred percent of the city-related expenses. In fact, it was very typically viewed by the city that Riverfest week was a week where pretty much the, in departments that were involved in helping to assist in Riverfest, pretty well shut down. So, the city's expenditures were very, very substantial, and that was the early going at Riverfest. Over the evolving years, the percentage that Riverfest contributed and the financial arrangements has changed. But what we have here with the resolution is a maximum city contribution of thirty thousand dollars, which in terms of the total expenditures related to a Riverfest event is extraordinarily small. There is a great motive for Riverfest to help keep those expenditures down because every dollar that is a city expense that accrues above sixty thousand dollars, Riverfest is going to pay a hundred percent of that. And it may very well be, and I suspect will be the case in some years, that the total cost will be less than sixty thousand, and the city's share less than thirty thousand dollars. I just feel that this is a great way to send the message that as a partner participant in Riverfest, the city appreciates tremendously all of the work of the many individuals that helped bring Riverfest to pass. This is a way of saying how we are eager to continue to partnership with this outstanding effort, and the benefits that will accrue are almost unquantifiable based upon the direct and indirect financial benefits to the city through Riverfest. So, for really almost every conceivable point of evaluation, this is a fair apportionment of the cost, and I think it sends all the right messages for an event that is so important and does just a tremendous amount in continuing a tradition that really has been the envy of the state of Wisconsin in terms of its success.
Mr. Mayor?
As being a member of council who was on board when we first put in the cost sharing for Riverfest, I think it's very important for us to stay true to the direction that was heading in terms of shifting that burden away from being entirely borne by the city. However, I'd like to clarify a couple of things. I believe I am correct in the first establishing the twenty-five thousand dollar number here is not the city's portion of twenty-twenty-four. It is the portion that is being asked of Riverfest. Correct in that regard. Do we actually have a number for what was the city's portion for twenty-twenty-four?
The city incurred costs of sixty-two thousand six hundred and seventy dollars for twenty-twenty-four. Of that, it invoiced Watertown Riverfesting for thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty-nine cents, and this would be reducing that invoice down to twenty-five thousand dollars.
So, therefore, on that basis, if we were to replay twenty-twenty-four under these rules, it would actually result in the city paying less than we ended up actually paying. And I'm just playing this out, so this, to Alder's original question, this isn't, using twenty-twenty-four as comparison point, this isn't increasing the city's contribution. It actually would decrease the city's contribution. If we had the same costs in twenty-twenty-five as we did in twenty-twenty-four, the city would end up paying less of that and charging Riverfest more of it. So, this is, to my mind, a move in the positive direction for the city to shifting a little more of that cost burden to Riverfest, which I think is in the spirit of what you were...
That's what I'm trying to say, I guess.
Yeah. So, I think it's actually going to achieve what you want, just the way it's worded. It's easy to get it. Kind of all mixed up.
Be good, Mr. Arnett. Mr. Berg?
Again, I think it was mentioned by Jonathan that in twenty-four, the attendance, to the extent they can estimate, was over forty thousand people that attended over that four-day period. And we can't come up with other examples that come close to that as far as participation and involvement in our community and numbers like that. And the economic benefit for our hotels and our restaurants and everything as far as the business, gas stations, whatever you might call, they all have some degree of benefit, some a lot more than others, but there's a lot of economic benefit for the Watertown community by our continuation of this event each year. And the last two years have been very successful, and it's showing good momentum under the different leadership approach we have, and I'm just real pleased. I know people that like the carnival, people that like the car show and the arts and crafts and the music, obviously, but the combination of all those events and activities for that four-day period, based on good weather, it just does nothing but create goodwill for our town. And we can't find a better example for economic development. And the payment we make in context of what we get for it is a winner for the city of Watertown.
Berg?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Blanky?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Arnett?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Mullenhauer?
Aye.
Davis? Motion passed.
Thank you. Last is comments and suggestions from citizens present.
I'm going to play music on someone out there. It's really kind of somber to call the time when I come. I'm just John Schlemmer. I live in Watertown. I'm the advocate that the council of the city would find a way to compensate businesses who lost money from construction. And I don't know if you've ever considered it. You have, it would be like you've heard about it. Some cities will do grants, loans, maybe reduction of property taxes for a very short time. Just some effort to compensate. This last time, the bridge out, it seemed like more businesses were affected, and now there's sixteen out. I've already heard of some businesses. Just something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schlemmer. Mr. Schlemmer, what's your address, sir?
Oh, five hundred Wall Street.
Five hundred, okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, in that case, I entertain a motion adjourned.
The move.
Second.
Motion by Arnett, second by Mullenhauer. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you, everybody.